So, good evening and welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for June 13th. We are starting at 6:30 this morning, or this afternoon, sorry, it's been a long day. We're broadcasting this meeting on Pacific Coast TV's website as well as Zoom. We have community members in the audience, just let you know that we will be taking public comment during the general public comment section on the agenda as well as the specific items listed on the agenda. During that time, you'll have three minutes to speak. Those in attendance here, present, will speak first, and then we will go through the Zoom folks next. I don't know of any correspondence or any extra additional information that's come in, and the presenters will state that if something came in last minute this evening. And I think I will turn it over to Chair Hernandez to officially start.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please get a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Ruddock.
I'm here.
Commissioner Gorn.
Yeah.
And Chair Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioners Jonas and Johannes and Vice Chair Gossett are both absent this evening. Next is minutes.
Do we have any comments on the minutes? Can I get a motion?
I move we approve those minutes.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
You can just say aye.
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 Okay, the next thing we have on the agenda is, oh, thank you. As Bridget indicated, we have public comment as the next thing on the agenda. If any of you who are dialed in remotely or who are participating in spirit or hear an audience would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, then now is your opportunity to do so. Is there anybody in the Zoom queue?
Yes, we have one. Carlisle Anne Young, you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, I'm curious because I saw that you have stormwater on your actual agenda, but I don't know if your capital improvement programs are funded yet because last time I looked at the capital improvement budget, the stormwater improvements were like $10,450,000 of unfunded. It's more like a wish list, it seems. So, I'm just curious if you can explain that when you get to your item. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, I have no one else.
And I see none of the members of the public who are here present raising their hands to speak, so I will close the public comment. And we will move to the first public hearing item, which is 1A, the capital improvement program for the fiscal year 2023-2024's general plan conformance. Maz, are you presenting?
I will be presenting, thank you Chair Hernandez. Maz Mozoginian, Public Works Director and City Engineer, happy to be here tonight, and thank you for accommodating our time to present this. It's really nice to be here again and present our capital improvement program for general plan conformance. So, the recommendation tonight is after the public hearing and item, it's to, the item is to review the capital improvement program for this upcoming fiscal year 2023-2024 and adopt a resolution with findings that this proposed project list, as contained in the five-year CIP, are consistent with the general plan. I'm a little background for folks that may not know what a capital improvement program is. It's basically a tool to utilize the city's many projects and look at facilitating scheduling of these improvements, providing some orderly management of the capital projects with consistency with the general plan, as well as getting it eligible for many grant opportunities, which is, you know, which helps us. And I understand that a lot of the funds are not allocated currently, especially for some of our other programs such as stormwater. But having it on the CIP list gives us the ability to work on it, ensuring that it's within the consistency of the general plan, and then ultimately helps us when we are looking at grant funding sources, which for stormwater projects, we end up looking quite a bit because there is not a allocated source of funding towards those, that infrastructure. And then from there, our CIP, our capital improvement program is split into two distinct categories, if you will. We have projects which are generally larger, one-time improvements, and most of the time they, these have, these are multi-year projects, they may have rollovers. And then we have more, we have programs which are more ongoing efforts for smaller capital projects and maintenance, things that we do more, we would like to do or are doing annually, such as our street resurfacing project this year, that's something that's out of a program that we're looking to continue doing on an annual basis. So what happens is with the programs, you'll get, we'll do description updates of what we've accomplished the previous year, and then we'll identify what's on the slate for the next year. And then, of course, the categories that we have include stormwater, economic development, operations, parks, facilities, sewers, streets, and trails. Just a little highlight, this year's accomplishments are a little bit on the lower end, given the flooding and rain events we received during the 2022-23 storms. We have more projects that have been added to the programs with some of the areas that have been damaged, so the accomplishments list is a little bit thinner than it has been in most years, given the amount of rain that we received earlier this, this calendar year. But some of the things that we were able to accomplish were the downtown street can replacement project, which took out some of the old concrete waste bins and implemented the three bin waste recycling and compost that we are looking at implementing citywide. We've, we've replaced the core downtown area with these newer bins, and you, probably the picture here on the top right is at Mac Dutra. You'll notice them along other places as well, on Main Street and some of the side streets surrounding the downtown. We've also completed the draft climate action plan. That document has been circulated as well as quite a bit of public outreach. At this point, we are, we have a final draft that's, we're looking to move forward for adoption, which should be in the next couple of months, so that's one thing that we were able to accommodate, accomplish. The Mac Dutra restroom remodel, we have, we've actually started that a couple weeks ago, and that's an internal project with our maintenance crews and some, and some subs to finish out some of the components, and that project we're looking to complete by the end of the month, so it's moving pretty quickly. We were able to also complete our Kelly Avenue crosswalks project. There had been a number of concerns from residents and visitors about the lack of crossings and protected crossings, high visibility crossings, I'm sorry, on Kelly Avenue, and so that project was completed a few months back, and we're finalizing the documents to complete and close out that project. And then, of course, we have the Smithfield site assessment master plan, which was brought to the Planning Commission. We are currently working on the next phase there for the plan, for the project plans, but the master plan itself was, was accomplished in this, during this current year. So next, I have the list of the overall projects, I won't read it, this is part of the attachment that we have in the staff report. We have, what we do is we have, as we have done in previous years, we've taken each program category area, listed out the specific projects and programs within those areas, and then tied it to the policy and consistency within the general plan. So we've got the stormwater program, the economic development improvement area, operational improvements, parks, facilities, sewer, and street improvements, as well as trail projects. I can go back on the list, I'll just wrap up the last couple of slides, and then I'm happy to go back to listen, answer any questions. Couple of highlights for the projects that are coming up in 23-24, with the first one being the stormwater master plan update, that's something that has been on our list for a little while now, especially with the last rain events. We are taking a closer look at how our stormwater system operates and trying to incorporate the atmospheric rivers that we saw this past winter to certain extent, and seeing how we can better plan for those types of events, because it, it, it seems that that's not going to be a one-time thing, it may be a recurrence, so we want to make sure we do our due diligence and plan accordingly. I mentioned the Smithfield Park project, so the Phase 1 project is what we're working on, which overall, we're doing, we're looking at a full design for the stormwater, the streets and the utilities, the water line that's necessary for Smithfield. So that Phase 1 project is currently under design, and we hope to bring that to the Planning Commission at a future meeting for approval of a CDP and SEQA document. The next project I want to highlight is the Poplar Complete Street Project, Phase 1. That project is one component of the, the larger Complete Street project. This phase is on the downtown side from Main Street to Highway 1 on Poplar. We are actually going out to bid next week, so we are hoping to award a contract in August and start, start construction in the, in the, or in the early fall. The Highway 1 Safety North Project, that is the Highway 1 project that incorporates the Class 1 bike path from Main Street to Spindrift. That project is still moving along, we had some last-minute conflicts with PG&E, and we are working through some of those utility conflicts, and hope to have that out to bid by the end of the calendar year or early next year. So that's, that's our goal on that one, and we, we hope to start construction in the spring of next year. We have the Eastside Parallel Trail Segment North, Segment 4 on the north side, so that is the trail that goes from our existing, the existing trail that goes between Roosevelt and Rousseau-Français. It's to the north of that, and it will complete that segment connection to the, the multimodal trail that was recently completed by the county. That, that's actually another item, so I will save, we'll, we'll talk more about that one. And then some exciting news on the Eastside Parallel Trail Segment 2, that's the piece that would be from the future Class 1 that ends at Spindrift to Rousseau-Français. We were fortunate to get some funding through Jackie Spears' office, former Congresswoman Jackie Spears, and we are looking at, we are, we are on the, in the process of obtaining that federal earmark, and we'll look to go out to consult, sorry, get proposals for consultants for design and environmental and outreach, and we should be starting that process in this coming year. And then, you know, last but not least, the Seymour Ditch, we've, we've had that project on our list for a while, and we've been continuing to monitor and maintain it, but with the heavy rains that we saw this winter storms, there's been some additional headcuts and some other, some additional erosion, so we are looking at taking a project to address some of the more immediate concerns, as well as work with our stakeholders like Post and Coastside Land Trust, where we've met several times already, to look at how we can maintain that, that water course, as well as upstream retention and other land use items with, with regards to the properties that are owned by those entities. So just a couple more pictures, just wanted to share, we've got, so that you can see on the right, that was a recent picture, that's the Seymour Ditch, and what happened there was, that was the, the rock dam that was, that was built about, about five years ago, and it, it had been maintained by city crews and restacked and cleaned here and there over the, over the last five years. However, the amount of stormwater and the flows of the, and velocities of those stormwater through the ditch, like many other areas, did actually erode out that area. So we're looking at going out and repairing some of those features, as well as looking at other improvements to mitigate the headcut and, and reduce that before it continues upstream. And then the little photo on the top left is just a rendering of the, of the future signal at Terrace and Highway 1 and the Frontage Road extension that goes to Grand Avenue. And, and of course, I didn't mention it here, but staff is also working on some affordable housing projects, and so 555 Kelly is one of those projects that's continuing to move forward. With that, I have the recommendation here, and that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions or comments on any of the projects or programs.
Mr. Chair, may I just say one thing?
Yes, please.
Well, beyond, thank you, Maz. Just to, to remind the audience and those listening, the role and responsibility tonight is to look at the list that the city council has forwarded to the commission and determine whether those projects are in compliance and consistent with the general plan. It is not to talk about the dollars and cents of those projects, it's not to prioritize those and deal with it, you can certainly weigh in and, and give your thoughts and ideas, and the community is welcome to do that as well. But the time to speak for the community and public is really on the 20th, next Tuesday, with the council, if there's a question or concern about funding and where that, where the prioritization of funding should be. So I just wanted to make that clear, I think you guys have done this for a few times, just for the audience's edification on that. Thanks.
If I could restate that with maybe a head nod from our illustrious attorney, Winter, just to make sure we got it right, our, our job is to identify if there are essentially, if there are things that we feel or objectively note are inconsistent with the LUP, we should call those out, and if there are things, if everything we look at from this plan otherwise doesn't have anything that is inconsistent, then we can approve everything as is. Is that fair, Winter?
Yes, that's correct, and this is obviously, you're looking at this from a pretty high level, we don't have specifics of individual projects, and again, you all will get to see, CDPs come your way when there are actual applications for CDPs to review.
That said, are there any comments from my fellow commissioners? Do we have any, I will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a, anybody online who would like to make a comment, or any members of our public? I see somebody has raised their hand.
Yeah, Carlisle Anne Young wants to speak.
Sorry, I, I thought you had to unmute me, but that's just the Board of Supervisors. Okay, so I heard over the years that Hapun Bay is considering annexing Moon Ridge, and they had a really bad flood this year, so did a lot of people, but are there any proposed plans in your stormwater budget to help with mitigating the, what will probably be recurring storm events at the Moon Ridge property? Or is that just something down the road when you, if the city decides to annex that particular 160-unit parcel?
I think that's a very good question. Normally, we don't engage in a back and forth here. Do you have any other comments that you'd like to, or questions or comments you'd like to make before we bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion?
I'm just really concerned about stormwaters, especially, you know, in light of what happened this January, so that was one of my things, you know, Pillar Cedas Creek flooded this, nearly took out our sewer plant, it took out a lot of properties on Oak Avenue temporarily, and of course, Moon Ridge, so that's my main thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments?
I see none here online and in person.
So I'm going to bring it back to the Planning Commission for comments or discussion.
Thank you, Chair Hernandez. I, I understand our role here tonight in examining this list of projects and programs. I, I see no conflict with the city's general plan, so I'll be, I'll be prepared to confirm that as, as soon as my fellow commissioners are.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, so I know the list of accomplishments you say is kind of short, there were so many things that the city worked on that were not on that list of accomplishments. I would put Carter Park on that, because I thought that was, city took big steps towards Carter Park, but anyway. And great news on the Segment 2, money, that's so great. That's so good to hear, I didn't know about that. So, I had a couple of questions, I wanted to know about the, the downtown streetscape master plan, I assume includes the parklets, is that right?
I need to run with it.
That is, so yeah, the downtown streetscape project is going to be a significant outreach process and concept level design, it's going to look at elements within the downtown core area, which includes parklets and some of the other features that are out there within the streetscape, so it is all encompassing.
Let me just, if I could.
Please.
It, it is not, the focus of that plan is a much, much, much
broader.
Bigger and deeper and longer-term look than that, and frankly, I think the, your policy has been set with regard to the parklets for the time being, and we can reevaluate that. But the streetscape master plan is that 20, 30-year look at where, where should we be investing, how should we be investing in our stormwater and, you know, reevaluate, should we reevaluate parking, should we, you know, in terms of configurations, how do we deal with sidewalk widths, and perhaps, you know, addressing sidewalk width gets us to the point where we don't need parklets as much because we have capacity within those, so those are the big picture. And I am hoping to come back to you folks probably August to sort of kick it off with you, so we'll get you more information and details on the streetscape master plan, and with a charrette right now scheduled for roughly September, week of September 11th.
Bravo.
So we will get moving with that, and we'll bring it back to you, and I think you'll be excited about it.
So, just to be clear, that downtown, downtown streetscape master plan does include parklets, but it's just a little piece, is that correct?
It, it includes parklets to the extent that we're looking at downtown.
Okay.
It, it was not necessarily a fixed issue. We are also going to be looking at signage for 92 and directional signage and things that nature also is, is part of that, as, you know, so there's a lot to it, I'll unpack that for you a little bit, probably in August, and.
So, when I was looking over the stormwater improvements, I didn't see Pullman on there. Is that, did I miss it? It seems like that's a big one. I also didn't see anything about the Wavecrest Trails, but that might be in the Coastal Bluffs project, I don't know, so I'm asking.
The, so the Wavecrest Trails we're talking about, that's specific to the Coastside Land Trust property, or are we, so that, that actually is outside the city limits, so that project wouldn't be listed in our CIP?
It's not outside the city limits.
Oh, sorry, outside of our control, it's a private property, so that's something that Coastside Land Trust will be working on, and we will, that, we will be the overseeing body as, as the, the local coastal commission. As far as the other piece, I'm sorry, what was the other one?
Pullman.
So, on Pullman and Roosevelt, we're looking, we're trying to figure out kind of a larger step. There are some minor things we can do with regards to the, those, those water courses themselves, but the, the impact of the larger watershed is what we're looking at as far as the, the master plan, so that's looking at all of our watersheds, and under that review, it's not going to be a complete redo of our master plan. What our intention is to look at the specific watersheds that feed some of these critical creeks and streams, and then we can figure out how we're going to address it, because the little-lying areas in the end of pipe, we have very limited ability to do much. the low-lying areas and the end of pipe, we have very limited ability to do much. There are some opportunities to do things here and there, but really, we need to figure out how much stormwater is coming and what properties are upstream and how we can try to engage some of those owners and take care of some of those concerns before they get to the smaller ditches.
If I would, if I could remind you, in the community, Pullman Ditch is a private conveyance. So it is private property. It is not a public facility. We have made ourselves available to discuss with the property owners along that. We have discussed the possibilities of a benefit assessment district creation there for them to participate in that. Maz's crew will be looking at the issues on the larger basis of this, but ultimately, that is not the city's responsibility. That is a private party's responsibility who own along there unless and until there is an agreement and discussion among that group to create it as a public facility. Just to be clear for everybody in the audience.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, John. And so, you know, that's, so the big, the big step that we take first is really understanding the flows and the hydrology. And then once we have that understanding, we can approach them and see really what are the size of these types of, do we need a retention system? You know, are we looking at underground storage or groundwater recharge?
Right.
Where do we do it? Those are some of the details that we will flush out with our larger watershed master plan.
That sounds great. So, but I was concerned seeing specifically Roosevelt and Kehoe and not Pullman. And whether it's private or public, the city still has something to say about it. But you're saying that's sort of part of the overall storm range plan?
That's kind of the, after going through this process, we've, you know, so the cities have
Don't feel the need to, like, single it out?
It's, I mean, yeah, it's, we, I think we have it on our list in some areas, but again, I think with, with our larger watershed, understanding where we can do some of these improvements and the fact that this is a private, these are through private properties, you know, once we have a better understanding, we'll reengage with the neighbors and see what, how best we can move forward. I've had ongoing conversations with several neighbors, understand their concerns, and I think, you know, figuring out where, how much volume of water we're looking at and how we can address some of those high flows, because that's where they, that's where they get hit the hardest, is when we have those high flows go through there.
Yeah. Thank you.
I share the concern about Pullman Ditch not being in there. The question of, is it consistent or inconsistent? I think if I go back to the high level and the comment that the one participant from the public made on this, the stormwater is a major concern and a major area of focus in the budget overall, and you're looking at all of the impacts. And is it fair to say outside of the budget, the CIP process, that if you identify that Pullman is a significant risk that needs to be mitigated, you're going to prioritize that?
Once we, I think that's a fair assessment. Once we understand the hydrology and the watersheds in more detail, the priorities may change, and we would, we could come back at a mid-year to-do adjustments based on those findings.
And does the CIP give you flexibility to do that if we don't approve it today?
It does. And again, I think it would be, it's more of the matter of, you know, coming up with the, with the potential and then determining where, what the city's role is within that, specifically to the Pullman.
And you're looking at all of this comprehensively? So you're going to, if you make a finding, you're going to come to us or go through the process?
Correct. Once we have the findings, we'll, the next step in that process would be sharing that information with the public. It'll be, you know, we'll, you know, whatever the process is, but disseminate that information amongst the community and come up with a plan of action to address.
Okay, great. And so two things stand out with consistency with the LUP. The first one is, one of the most prominent recommendations of the General Plan Advisory Committee and one of the strongest policies we have is to think about, as we think about planning from a long-term perspective, both for the charrette as well as for the parallel bike path, is the concept of the Town Boulevard. Are you incorporating that into the design process for the parallel trail as it comes into town? And is that being incorporated into the planning for the charrette downtown as well?
No, I think that's a good, that's a good point. The downtown streetscape plan absolutely looks at all of the documents that have been adopted and approved beforehand. We're actually going through the process of providing all those documents to the consultant. So we definitely will consider that. And the, you know, our trails, the parallel trails, those are, those are a little bit outside of the downtown corridor as far as the pieces that we're proposing to work on. But as we move forward, there are going to be opportunities to look closer at the trail segments through the downtown piece. So absolutely, that'll be part of our review process.
I think there's an open question of if the Town Boulevard goes along Highway One or it goes through Historic Highway One, which is Main Street. And so I think that it's just, it's an important thing that we want to keep some, it's a north star we should be focused on as we do planning in the downtown area and we think about bike trails.
Okay.
The second thing, I'm really glad to see that bike trails and other things are in the budget. It's important. I'm a little disappointed that there's nothing in the capital improvement plan for trails on the south end of town connecting Moon Ridge to Main Street. I know there've been a number of advocates in the community who've been working with the county to try to get funding for that, and so it seems like a miss from my perspective. And, you know, it's, if I think about some of the policies we have about creating an integrated, connected community, even though Moon Ridge is technically in the county, they're still part of our community, that seems like something where, I'd love to see something like that. I know you've, you've probably got way more, there's way more projects in here that we could possibly get funded, but, you know, it's a relatively small project with a significant impact to the community.
No, I think, I mean, I think that's fair. And yeah, definitely the list of projects that we have, I, you know, I would be lying if I said we're going to finish all of these by the end of the next fiscal year. We do have the, that connection point to Moon Ridge as part of the long-term five-year plan.
Okay.
So it is on the list. It's just not something that's highlighted for 2023, 24. Now, it doesn't mean that we're not looking for opportunities to fund some improvements and studies, because that's a, that's a larger, that's a, it's a little bit of a larger task because there is a potential for whether we look at, you know, part of the downtown Boulevard plan, there's some components there, but really, do we extend Highway One and have it some kind of parallel to that? There's been some thoughts about going through some of the existing farms and having it a little bit separated out. So we are looking at funding opportunities to do some feasibility studies. This is a little bit outside of our
Just, I'll, I'll help, I'll help you, Maz and everybody on this. We requested funding from Congresswoman Eschew for that very extension and study that you're discussing and dealing with that. We had requested and submitted, Maz's group submitted a very, very detailed, I thought a very good application to the federal government for a grant, which we did not receive for that deal. But we are absolutely looking at that. We recognize the need for that subtly connection, and it is in the long term, and we have asked for Congresswoman Eschew's office to support that for this coming year, to provide some funding, significant funding for design, study, and analysis of that, and environmental. But that's a significant effort doing that.
Great, thank you, and I appreciate the work that you guys are doing there. Just want to make sure we're touching all the bases. So the last comment that I'll have is that, you know, the, again, the Speaker mentioned Moon Ridge and the potential for flooding. If I recall correctly, our policies don't look at Half Moon Bay as an island unto itself, but as part of a broader natural scape, geology. Jimmy was here, he'd mentioned geomorphology just to show off, but, but we're all tied together. So as you do these water studies, you're, you're doing them with the big picture of how we, how Moon Ridge has impacted other parts of the unincorporated county around us on the coast side are incorporated, and how we touch each other, and you're coordinating with the county as part of this process.
It's a great statement, and that's, that's some of the, some of the area, and that's part of the update that we're looking at for the watersheds, is it's not really about the geographic boundary of our city limits, but where are those high points? Where are those valleys? Where is the water migrating to? So when we look at those maps, it's looking at a watershed-based limits, and it may touch areas outside of our city limits. It will touch limits outside of our, our city limits, but that's, we need to understand that to know how much water we can anticipate.
Great, thank you. I have no other comments. Anything else? Okay, can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution at hand with findings confirming that the Planning Commission finds the proposed FY 2023, '24 capital projects are consistent with the city's general plan.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, a second.
All right, can I get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion approved, 3-0.
Okay, very good. All right, let's move on to the next item on our agenda. Item 1B, the Pacific Coast Bicycle Connectivity North Project on the East Side Parallel Trail.
For the record, I'm Doug Garrison, planner on this project. Since this is a city project, Maz is going to introduce it. He kind of touched on it in the CIP presentation. Just a little background as to how this actually went from an idea to a real project and the funding, and then I'll take over with the normal planning stuff.
Thank you, Doug. So yes, so tonight, we're here for the, for this project, the segment for East Side Parallel Trail. Just a little background, this city-sponsored project is located on Caltrans right-of-way. It's, and it's been a multi-agency effort. We obviously have the Caltrans right-of-way to, Caltrans to work with, but also some of our partners to the north, like San Mateo County. This project was identified as a top 10 priority project within our bicycle and pedestrian master plan that was adopted in 2018. And again, this, this piece would be the current missing link in this, this northern city limit from Frenchman's Creek. Once this piece is in place, you would be able to utilize this East Side Parallel Trail from there all the way to El Granada Elementary School with the completion of the county portion. So really exciting to see, really exciting to be able to move forward here and really get some good connections here as we move forward. And just a little highlight, the funding for this project, a lot of it did come from our regional partners. The San Mateo County Transportation Authority, with through grants, are sponsoring $980,000 of the design and construction. We received $350,000 from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and our local match was $35,000. So quite a bit of regional funding to support this project. Just wanted to show the limits of the project. Again, this goes from the northern side of Rocket Farms, and it connects up to Alto Road, which is near the barn, and connects to the existing recently completed county multipath trail. And as part of the larger, the larger implementation, this is the county plan for implementing the bike pedestrian connectivity, and you can see where these connection points between downtown Half Moon Bay and going up to the north and to the south are part of the long-term plans. There's quite a bit of, there's quite a bit of projects from other agencies like Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District to build new trails and making these connections, connection points to those locations are something that the county, as well as the city, are looking to complete and complement. With that, I will turn it over to Doug.
I want to get into a little bit of the details here. If you look at where the project starts, this is an existing driveway to the south, connects to the existing trail, goes north, that's the red line. And it's a little bit hard to see, but this dotted line, those are some informal drainage ditches through here. They're a little bit random. They're not part of any organized stormwater drainage plan. So a lot of our design was to avoid those ditches. Where it's located is, it's a little bit higher ground, it's level. For the most part, it's, it's just rooterial grasses, weeds. There are a couple of key areas. One is, as I discussed at length in the report, there's a lot of different names for this creek. It's Naples Creek, Roosevelt Ditch, Roosevelt Creek. We noted in our land use plan, it's called Roosevelt Creek, so that's what we've called it. There will be a new bridge across this. It's a prefabricated, single-span, cuts down on the impacts a lot. We don't have to do any grading or work in the creek or on the banks going into the creek. As we move forward, we will have to cross a couple of these little informal drainage ditches. Those, we're using sort of a boardwalk-like structure to get over so we don't interfere with sort of the historical water flow patterns through here. When we get to the northern end, it's a little more complicated. There are some riparian willow stands here. What's interesting, I'll get into this in a minute, but if you look at these, when this started back in 2018, 19, these willows grew almost all the way out to the edge of pavement. And Caltrans actually cuts those back frequently, just in an occasionally unfair world, they're allowed to do that, whereas if we want to build a bicycle path, we have to get a coastal development permit and go through SEQA, but that's the way the world is. It's actually worked out to our advantage. We'll be disturbing a smaller area of willows because of their work. So the key issues, this one, there's not a lot of vertical construction, so in some respects, it's pretty straightforward. We go through our land use plan, zoning conformance. The key issues here are really environmental resources when we get near the creek or those riparian areas. Because it's so close to Highway One, a Town Boulevard, we do, we did look at visual resource, but again, project there, no lights, no structures other than the bridge proposed, so not really a big issue. Normally, in the zoning consistency, we would talk a lot about what kind of zoning designation and lot coverage and stuff. This is Caltrans right-of-way. There is no zoning designation. The, the issues for us in our LUP and the zoning code are trails are a priority. This particular segment of trail has been planned for, for a number of years now. Our land use plan and our zoning code allow trails and bridges in riparian areas and buffers. There was a little bit of confusion about riparian areas because no mission in our LUP. I discussed that at length in the staff report, so I won't go through that again. This map shows the different habitat types, and again, you can see most of this, it's just flat, rooterial. This area right here, it's a freshwater marsh. It's at the, right where Roosevelt Creek goes underneath Highway One, there's a culvert and there's kind of a low area and the water collects there. Our trail goes well east of that. We won't be, in fact, impacting that in any way. And again, we go over these little drainage ditches. And as I, this map, I think goes back to 2018, and you can see where the RS, that's the riparian scrub vegetation, it comes right out to the edge of pavement when they mapped it then, and it's, it no longer goes to there. This is the freshwater marsh area, a little bit different type of vegetation, a little bit lower area, it's depression, but again, we're avoiding that area entirely. I wanted to point out, the bridge, when we go across the creek, there are concrete pilings on either end. They drill the holes, pour the concrete in, so there's very little grading or heavy equipment use near the bank of the creek. It really is just a much better design as far as not affecting the creek or other areas. There was a mistake in the staff report that you received. received through a couple of revisions. The version that went out had the wrong distances from these concrete piers to the, the top of bank. I believe it said 10 to 20 feet, and it's actually 6 to 8 feet. On this side, that's a little bit shorter, it's 6 feet, this is 8 feet here. The faint dotted line, that's the profile of the creek bank. You can see we're well above that and the piers are set back from it, so no effects there. These are some photos of the, the rooterial vegetation leading up to the riparian. Again, this was, I think, 2018 or 19. And you can see the willows come, they're almost growing out onto the highway at this point. The rest of this, it's just mostly non-native grasses and that sort of thing. Caltrans cut a lot of this back for safety reasons. So you can see there's a driveway here, and because of concerns over line of sight for cars trying to come and go here, these willows were cut back quite a ways. The bigger group of willows, these have started to grow back, the lower hanging ones here. But if you look up here, the taller ones, that's, that's really where they cut it back to. And that helps us out a lot because that's right where our trail's going. Just a close-up of that. Again, you can see, these are, these are all fairly young branches, shoots coming off of the mature willows that are set back further and closer to the drainage ditch that runs through here. Assuming this is a nine-foot road shoulder, we have to keep a five-foot setback from the edge of pavement to meet Caltrans standards. So that would mean the edge of our trail is, it would just about line up with these orange construction signs if you drew a straight line through here. And then for a 10-foot wide path, it would, if you look at this nine-foot shoulder, it would, we would just barely be getting into the, the mature willows that they didn't cut back. So like I said, that's helped us a lot from when we prepared the initial study. We're prepared to mitigate for the full amount. Once we get into construction, it may actually be a little bit less damage to willows. But just to let you know, it's, it's not static there. There's underground, there's a sewer line there, there's overhead power lines. Those utility companies have to go in there from time to time to do maintenance. In fact, part of our alignment follows some damage that, that was done on other utility work. So it's, it's an area that gets disturbed regularly. Just want to make that clear. We had another project, the Highway 1 North Safety Project, which was approved, I think, in 2018 or 19. That one had a similar situation. There were some willows we were going to have to remove for a bike trail. At the time, we proposed off-site mitigation, but we had not selected a, a site for it. Now we have a site, and we will take care of both of these projects, mitigation out at 880 Stone Pine on the Corporation Yard property. We found ourselves, we had one environment consultant who'd worked on the Highway 1 North project, another one who'd worked on the bike trail, and another one who'd worked on the mitigation plan at Stone Pine. So we, we decided to consolidate. We have one firm that is sort of dealing with everything moving forward for the mitigation, as well as, we will have to do some additional permitting through outside agencies, California Fish and Wildlife Service for a, a stream bed alteration agreement. And they are also working on that. They have recently been to all three of these sites on the, the bike trail. They've confirmed we will need the CDFW stream bed alteration agreement for the bridge. The other willows probably are not CDFW jurisdiction, but they will include those. We're going to CDFW anyway for the bridge. So we will potentially get them to concur that they're not under their jurisdiction, but we still have to mitigate because they are coastal zone issue. So doesn't really change things for us one way or the other. And for the off-site mitigation, this on the, the left, that's a little bit older map of the Corporation Yard when we were getting the permit for that. And I think it's a little bit outdated with the location of frog fences and stuff. But the key thing is really the bottom half here. When we bought this property from Post, there were some purchase requirements. One was to record a conservation easement, that's this yellow strip for a, a future public trail or some sort of public amenities there. And the blue is, that's a 50-foot riparian buffer from Pilosios Creek, riparian vegetation. And as this was getting approved, that's when the conversation was initiated about potentially building affordable housing out here. So I wanted to make clear, this one on the right, this is from the restoration plan. The green is where we would be planting willows, and those are all well down within the riparian setback. This yellow strip is sort of a riparian transition zone where they'll go from willows to a little more complex mix of vegetation to give a little more diversity, a little bit better ecological setting. All of that is well outside of anywhere where anybody would be looking for affordable housing. And also, it was designed to accommodate a future trail through here. We don't want to do all this riparian restoration. There are performance standards. There's five years worth of monitoring. We don't want to get through that and then tear it out to put in a trail. So we have thought about that this time, just, just to assure you. Like I said, visual resources. The only real structure is the bridge. This is the existing bridge that's south of this project. The one that we would be installing is very similar to this. Because we're in the Caltrans Right Of Way, we have to meet Caltrans design standards, so it's a little more robust than maybe I would have chosen. But again, you can see it, see-through railings here, muted natural tone colors, not really very visually impactful. We did receive comments on the initial study, mitigated negative declaration from Caltrans and from the Coastal Commission. Those are attached to the staff report with the staff response. I, I would note that none of the comments were directly related to the adequacy of the CEQA document. They didn't address whether we had evaluated all the potential impacts or if our mitigation measures were adequate. They were, Caltrans was more, you need an encroachment permit if you're going to have wide load trucks, you need to get a permit. The Coastal Commission was more about consistency with our approved LUP. And, and again, they've had some change over in staff, so there was some confusion about the omission of allowing trails in riparian buffer zones. And that was addressed in detail in the staff report as well as in our response to the Coastal Commission. We did send the, the responses to those agencies. Were required to send them a notice of the hearing 10 days, at least 10 days before. We've done all that. I haven't heard back from either agency. We did get one comment from a citizen who was in sort of the, in support of the project. She's a bicyclist and said this would help her out a lot. So in conclusion, staff's recommending that you adopt the mitigated necler, negative declaration and the mitigation and monitoring reporting program and then approve the project. I would note, I believe we have the biologists from SWCA is online if you have questions about the environmental side. Maz, engineers can handle technical questions and I'm available.
I'd like to open it up for public. Thank you for the great presentation and the thorough staff report. And I'm going to open it up for public comment. Not seeing any members of the public rushing to the lectern. I'll ask if we have, did we just have an outage on our Zoom?
No. Is it, did you lose something?
Something went, it's just my screen. Do we have anybody from the public who's commenting?
I don't see anyone online or present here tonight.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the Planning Commission for clarifying questions. Commissioner Reddick?
Thanks. And thank you, Doug, for this presentation and the, and the always thorough packet. I wanted to follow up a little bit on the Q and A that you and I had by email earlier today. The, the, on your map of the location, if I'm reading that right, I think we understand that there are two boardwalk-type structures that are to cross over drainage ditches. And yet, mo, most of the drainage ditches on that map seem to be running parallel to the trail and Highway 1 in between them. Could, I wonder if you could show us more specifically where those boardwalk structures will be?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And the reason why most of the drainage ditches are between the trail and the highways is because we designed it that way to avoid the ditches. It wasn't an accident. There are these east-west running ditches. So if we come down to this driveway where we start, there's a small drainage ditch that comes from the east and kind of, it curves around. So we will have to cross that. There will be a, a boardwalk structure there. Then we get to the bridge and then...
We're not, we're not seeing what you're intending to do.
Oh.
I'm not sure.
Hmm.
So there's air instead of drainage ditch.
Oops. Sorry. Do they still make laser pointers?
There we go.
Okay, great.
There it is.
So again, when we start here, there's a driveway, we connect to the trail. There's a, a little bit of a drainage ditch that comes down the side of this driveway and then curves to the north and follows the highway. So we will have to cross that one. There'll be a little boardwalk structure there so we don't interfere with the water flow. We get a little bit further north to where the bridge is. And then right in here at this driveway, there's another little drainage that comes down on the south side, and we'll have to have a boardwalk over that. I think there may be another little one on this side, on the north side. I'm not sure. When we get into these, the willows, riparian scrub areas, we've, we've tweaked this design a couple of times to try and stay out of the ditches going through those for practical reasons, just engineering as well as maintenance. But also, we didn't want to disrupt the sort of historic water flow through there. So we've been able to skirt around these ditches for the most part. As we get down into this area, I think going from this one where we curve towards the highway to avoid this more complex stand of riparian vegetation, we're going to have to cross a small drainage ditch in here, I believe. And it's in the rooter, most of these are in the rooterial area where it's mostly grass and weeds and stuff. As we go through this bigger patch, that's where I was showing you what 10 feet off of the highway sort of looks like. We can almost get it through there and stay out of that ditch. It's really difficult to survey the flow lines of those ditches because the vegetation's so thick. As we get in there, I think we are probably going to have to have some sort of boardwalk or cantilever thing to stay out of that ditch where we can't quite avoid it. But again, we're probably going to have to clear out some vegetation and get to the point where we can actually, even if it's just somebody out there with a tape measure, measuring, you know, where the path's going to exactly go and where the ditch is. So we are going to have to tweak that a little bit as we get into it, and there may be something in there if we can't avoid it entirely. And then I think at the northern end, there's, there's a drainage ditch that comes down from Alto, follows the highway. There's sort of another one that comes down from here. This alignment may get tweaked a little bit because we have to connect it to the county's trail. You know, they have to come together in the same place. So this, this may get moved a little bit just to line up with that. But this is all higher ground up here. So that gets us up away from the drainage and we're out of it. There may be a couple of boardwalks in here.
If I may just add, the, the county portion actually does come a little bit further into it past Alto. So we've, we actually worked very closely with the county to make sure that we do have the proper grades to match up with them when we get to construction.
Can I ask a follow-up? Thank you. Thank you, Doug. That makes sense. Are the, are the boardwalks to be similar to the bridge in the, in the sense that they will have concrete piers set a comfortable distance away from the tops of the banks?
I'll defer to the engineer on that one.
It's, it'll be a little bit smaller, so they'll be on concrete, spread concrete footings because you're not, the weight of it is much lighter than the bridge structure. So it'll be, I have the detail here on my computer, but it's basically more of a spread footing. We're not drilling in as deep, but it will have some concrete and it'll be slightly elevated to allow that flow to happen when it does need to.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gorn?
Quick question. So Caltrans has to cut these willows. So is the city going to be able to maintain this? Or are we going to have to depend on Caltrans to come in and trim back the willows from the path every couple of months?
Well, where the path goes, willows won't grow back in. We will have some ongoing maintenance to keep the willows from overgrowing the path. I, Caltrans typically makes us do the maintenance if it's our trail. So that would be part of our agreement with Caltrans that we're responsible for maintenance.
So we're allowed to do that?
Yes.
Okay, good. I guess my...
I, I would, there was, I believe in the initial study, there was a brief section where we discussed ongoing maintenance was, it was addressed under environmental impact. So it has been covered in the record.
Okay. So are we talking about this project or are we, okay.
I think we've moved to discussion.
So first of all, the 880 Stone Pine seems like a perfect fit for this mitigation. It's, there is enough room there, right, to, like, it seems like there's quite a bit that has to be mitigated? I just want to make sure that there is enough room there.
Yeah. We, we took a pretty close look at that. The combined willow mitigation, for, for willows, we temporarily impact on site. Those just have to grow back along the trail. If it's permanent, like where the bridge goes over the creek, they're not going to be able to grow back. So we are replacing those on a three-to-one basis off-site for this project. For the Highway 1 North project, we did not have our current land use plan that established the three-to-one ratio. So we're actually mitigating that at four-to-one just through sort of negotiations with people. So cumulatively, it's, it's .32 acres. And that, like I said, it may actually be less because of Caltrans work. On this one, the green areas where we're planting willows, and we can accommodate that easily. We have extra, more room to work with here. Like I said, this is sort of enhanced restoration where we're, willows are sort of notoriously the easiest... easiest thing to do. You stick them in the ground and they grow. This will be a little bit more diverse vegetation, but still riparian. So cumulatively, we have quite a bit of room to work with, in excess of what we actually need. And then, this buffer area, I don't know if you've been out there, but this is part of, it's left over from nursery mix exchange, there's lots of refuse, there's half-buried tarps and stuff. Some of that'll get cleaned up as part of this. But yeah, there's lots of room for us to work down there.
Okay. Just, it's a little hard to tell from the map, like, how much room is there? It looks so small on the map, but I just wanted to verify. I really like how you've made the bridge so much wider than the ditch, because obviously storm flows are going to increase, that ditch will get wider, but the bridge is much wider. So that was great. I guess my big concern here is something that wasn't mentioned, which is safety. So I know that there are a lot of little ditches and things like that, but the big thing is all the pavement that crosses that path. And if we're copying the counties, what they did on the other side of the bridge, you know, just kind of near Miramar, that's, it's kind of an unsafe where the street meets the bike path. There's no signage, there's no barriers, it's a little sketchy. So if we're doing that near the, you know, the nurseries there, I mean, I can tell you, at 4:00 in the afternoon, that is like, it's a speedway. It's like, everybody's trying to get out, and they're, there's just taking chances and going really fast and not looking where they're going, and, you know, it gets a little tense. So if there's bikes there, that's a problem. So that's maybe out of the purview of this project, but I definitely need to raise that.
That's fine. I would say we cross, this section of trail crosses where essentially driveways that don't get used much. The heavy traffic out of Rocket is mostly affecting where the existing trail is. So they're very close. If you look through the plans, I believe one of these driveways is going to be removed. It's not being used by anybody, so part of the plan is to remove that one. The other ones, like I said, don't get used often. We have sort of standard treatment where, you know, there's the yellow rumble strips on either side, there's a bollard there that lets people know that, you know, I'm not sure if we're going to actually have a sign that says crossing traffic, but it is in the plans that we will address that on what we're constructing now, anyway.
And if I may add...
Yes.
We do have a continental crosswalk with a raised platform for those crossings. It wasn't part of the presentation, but it is part of the project. So it will be a raised section, so that it would be kind of a speed table for the driveway that's still in use. And then, the bikes and pedestrians would be slightly elevated, and you would have markings similar to the crosswalks on Kelly Street, where you have the little shark teeth coming up to it where folks would yield. And then you have the brighter lines, the ladder and the continental lines, to really provide high visibility to where the pets and bikes would be traveling.
That's really good. I'm really glad to hear that. I can tell you, there are, I think there's three little driveways that are rarely used. One, I've never seen anybody on, I think that's the one we're, you're talking about closing. But the other two, they're rarely used except in the afternoon and the early morning, and then they're used a lot. And so, you know, from my point of view, riding bikes with little kids, it's the roads that are rarely used that are really dangerous, because you don't expect to see cars come out of there. And then you see a lot of cars come out of there in the late afternoon. So I don't know what can be done to address that, but I feel like that's a very important point.
On the project delivery side, we can certainly look at that in a little more closer detail and maybe even work with the proper owner to see if we can do some improvements leading up to that location.
Maybe close the other driveways?
If possible.
If possible. Okay, thanks.
And again, some of this, those driveways, other than me going out there to look at this site, they don't get used much. I think some of the utility companies use those to get like back to the power lines when they have to trim trees and stuff, so I don't know. It may get a little complicated with who has easements and stuff, but we can look into that.
Yeah, so normally, people just come straight out the main entrances, there's two of them. But then, when it starts to get packed and crowded, people start to go around and use the trails that, you know, those little roads that no one uses. So just keep an eye on it, if you would. Thank you. And so happy this project is going forward, and very impressed by how quickly it's going forward.
To the chair, may I make one other comment?
Yes, please.
I just want to thank our planning department, and Doug specifically, for his hard work on this project. We wouldn't be here without him. Doug, thank you so much. You've really been a wonderful planner, and I can't say enough nice things about you.
Excellent. And I hope your leg's healing better, Doug. So I echo the comments about safety on the project delivery side. It's not our job to litigate how you execute that, but I think the general concern on trails as we build them is how do you make them safer? And, you know, maybe putting a fence and a gate with a key, I don't know. You guys can come up with all kinds of ideas that are more effective than my creative ones that I'm throwing at you while we're in here. I will point out, on the policy side, there is a clear policy that allows you to build a trail in a riparian area. It's 647A, which is educational and research purposes, and it's an interpretive trail exclusion. And we talked about it specifically when we were going through things, so I'd make it, and scenic overlook is absolutely something that works as well, but put some interpretive signage on the trail, you know, give somebody something to do when their kid needs to take a break. Hey, look, there's a sign, there's a picture of a bird. I mean, I'm not totally being facetious here. I think it's a great project, I'm supportive of it, and I think you've addressed the concerns, the fact that it's in the Caltrans right-of-way, and they already effectively, you're taking on some of the maintenance that Caltrans would do, which begs the question of, hey, along those trails, I think we debatement is a more general thing that needs to be addressed, but it's not in scope with what we're doing here. Any other comments or questions?
I had one, just following up on the question of Caltrans in that right-of-way. Do you have any concerns about the access that utility companies might continue to need after the construction of the trail?
I think I could take this one. We certainly considered all of that, and certain areas where we, and that's why we haven't closed some of the driveways and the ones we were able to. And as far as access, there's enough room on the shoulder for a lot of these equipments with the boom trucks to be able to access some of those overhead lines. So absolutely, we've taken those into concern, those concerns into consideration, and we feel that we've addressed it sufficiently.
Commissioner Gordon?
No. Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Go ahead. I move that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration for this project and associated monitoring and reporting program, and approve the coastal development permit to allow construction of this trail.
Second.
Can I get a second? You got a second? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Gordon?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Reddick?
I vote yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Excellent. Thank you. This is an important project for the community. All right, let me get back to my agenda here. And our, I think that covers all the public agenda items. Is there a planning director's report?
I'll give a brief one, just to say thanks to Mike and Jill. They were able to get the housing element, I think you received notice of that, out and back to HCD with all the comments. And so, we are now officially in the 90-day review period with HCD, and they have offered to even come out and visit with us. It's easy when they're in Sacramento, they love to come out during the summertime, so we're a great place for them to come, and we do want them to come out and see what's up and what we're doing. So I think that's excellent news. We had a great Architecture Advisory Committee meeting, reviewing the 555 Kelly Architecturals, got some great comments and feedback on that, and we'll certainly be integrating some of those comments into the flow and the work there. We also, as we noted, we have done the kickoff for the Streetscape Master Plan, and that's something we will bring back to the commission. I also owe you a little update on the safety element work. We have entered into a contract through the county for, basically, with nine agencies to work on the safety element. So I'll look at bringing that back, and probably, perhaps the August, but perhaps even the July meeting to talk about that and go over that process. As you have seen, this is vacation time and business time, and it's been difficult to get quorum and get folks around, so we are scrambling. At this point, we've decided to cancel the June 27 meeting. We are, at this point, looking at July 11th, and we are also looking at the potential for a special meeting in August, with that one primarily focused on the Hyatt Place project. And so we'll be feeding more of that back to you and working through that, but at this point, we're looking at August 10th being, looking like the best possible date for the most commissioners to be in attendance and deal with that. So we'll work through that, and in any event, we wish Jill well visiting with her family, and glad that she was able to take a little time, although I can tell you she's working and working remotely. But anyway, we miss her, and I'm pleased to be here. I want to ditto on Doug. Doug did, the staff report was one of the best staff reports that I think our staff has prepared on extremely challenging and difficult project, and it was a pleasure reading it and doing that. And then, Moz, thank you for your vigilance. This is a project that's near and dear to my heart as well, and I know it is for the community and I know for the council. So thank you for your support tonight, and thank you for changing the time a little bit to accommodate things here. And so, it's been a pleasure to be here tonight, so thank you.
Do I have any, so thank you for that, and do we have any comments from commissioners?
One quick one. Bridgette has the info about my calendar, but I'll be absent from the July 11 meeting due to travels.
I have that, thank you. I think we're just waiting on Chair Hernandez and Gordon to give us an update on the August 10th, and then we can go ahead and start preparing for that meeting.
I can participate in the August 10th meeting. I'll be back in a minute.
You'll be there. Okay, that's great, because we can start publicizing and doing all that fun stuff. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Gordon? I really like the compactors, the solar-powered compactors you've moved to Main Street. Just to comment, they're a little gross, and the glass surfaces probably need to be cleaned a little more often, just as a member of the public. But it's awesome to have them there, and it's better than what we had previously, which is garbage cans with stuff piling over and the trash not being sorted. So thank you for finding a way to reuse those, that's great. So I don't have any other comments. Just thank you all for the really well-organized meeting and accommodating our schedules so that we could, you know, make this happen today. Can I get a motion?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.